The last time we all were together was the end of August. And following that August meeting, or the end of that August meeting, we had a conversation that there were two important meetings that were happening in September with the borough's participating. And it was in the consideration that following those meetings, we were going to be able to talk about that those outcomes and then those relationships to this effort, so that you have the opportunity to move this project on to the council. So what we've done is Lori has been busy in her coordination this month related to both sort of the technical side of things as well as then meeting with municipalities in the watershed. And I think two important things that have come out of that. One is that the technical side of things is continuing to move forward in terms of their assessment and considerations for potential types of design. And she can speak a little bit more to that. The second piece is then in meeting with the municipalities, each of the municipalities, this was just last week, each of the municipalities were identifying that they have respective projects going on that are contributing or trying to be proactive to reduce the impact of the flood. And so at this point in time, with that discussion, there is not yet sort of a regional type of solution that's formed. But I think that meeting was sort of the biggest step to identify for each of the municipalities by the end of the meeting that it was imperative that they continue to talk with one another and actually continue to share the specifics about each of the efforts happening within their municipalities. So that things like, maybe there is an effort just upstream from here, that that information is shared with the boroughs so that it could be posted on the borough's website. And then vice versa, if there's something happening here in Bridgeville, that Bridgeville is sharing it with the other municipalities within the watershed and possibly even other watersheds. So that, you know, it's not just a project inclusive of the borough's thoughts, but really then how can these projects ultimately get woven together in a bigger picture solution? Because some of the things, even with the construction standards for... Maggie's example, for example, Georgia. One of the ones, a question came in about, well, with the construction saying of the Whole Foods and all of that impervious surface, and there isn't a stormwater pond, you know, the typical kinds of things that we see that were saying, well, this is contributing more to runoff or more to the impact. And in the reality is that that has underground storage for stormwater as part of that design and that construction. And so that type of project is handling stormwater from that site in a way that some people may not immediately see. So being able to identify across the municipalities that here is status of different projects or different efforts that are in the works. And they can each then highlight their own and highlight what happens.
Who all was involved?
So Vettel, Torek, Upper St. Clair, and the others. So I think how that contributes to this effort is that in the regional context of this, it is, we're calling out like the central project is the focus of where the now has been. We identified that there's the northern project, which would be trying to resolve, and that gets into, I think, even some more specifics of the Army Corps' effort for the bridge and the rail crossing just north of our area. And then the southern project, which is really gotten some legs in terms of the ball field and the catchment of the gates there. So that the ball field has the opportunity to be lowered and increase capacity there. And then the gate so that we can minimize what's coming downstream from anything prior to the park. So that feeding into this communications piece, so we have our first big technical item to get underway with this concept for the central area. We have the two complementing northern and southern projects that are ready to sort of move, I'm going to say in parallel, right? And we sort of have three things going on related to this. And then this bigger piece about the communications. And that truly being one of the things where Bridgeville has the opportunity, I think, to get right into being a leader in that communication effort, identifying that they're ready to host that information and share that information. So it's not only what's going on in the borough, but what's going on in the adjacent municipalities. So as that information comes in, they'll be setting up some sort of, you know, protocol for all those types of things, so everybody understands what's happening.
Did you guys ask real quick, did you get a feel from them even whether there's things in the works that are short-term and immediate?
There are short-term, midterm, and long-term projects being planned in each of the municipalities, including ours. So what's going to happen is we're going to meet every other month and we're going to get some type of a criteria as far as how we're going to list those things. And they're going to be listed, updated on all the websites of all the municipalities, so that everybody can be aware and understand the projects. If they don't, they can contact the local municipalities and ask questions. But the information will be there to have, you know, so that they can ask. Because the Whole Foods one was one that during the flood, that was one of the things that people were yelling at me, a subbing foods thing, you know? And there's underground stormwater management. Another one was, it's that Bednar Farms thing. Well, all of theirs goes over to Phoenix Run. So I think the education has to be out there too, that there is stormwater management and it exists, and where is it? So that we're also going to do some mapping so that, you know, the detention ponds and where the stormwater management is and where it's proposed and all those things too. So that everyone is more aware. But yeah, it's going to be short, mid, and long term in all municipalities. So and everybody is like, everybody's like us. We're costing already to see what our short-term is going to be. And they're doing too, so.
Do last question, I thought today, did we talk about our Flinlaco Park plans? Any reception from them, good, bad, or?
Yeah, it was a good idea, yeah. Everything was positive.
Good.
I mean, every, everyone knows that things need to be done to make it better. And, you know, as far as philosophies go, as far as cleaning the streams go, we acknowledge that our philosophies are different. But Vettel Park's philosophy is different than ours also. They send out code enforcement letters to clean up the streams as do Upper St. Clair. They don't do what we do either. So we acknowledge that the philosophies are different. But their letters are working. What they tell us is they have people cleaning out and then people are sending on their neighbors because, you know, if they have to do it, their neighbors have to do it. So everybody does something different and it's your choice what you do. But everybody's proactive and moving forward. Who knows that we have to plan for the long term, so.
Excuse me Lori, there's enforcement to the residents by the other community. They are underawarded, so they're volunteer. I hope they are underawarded.
They're underawarded.
Yeah, we don't have them.
Well, we have code enforcement also, and we can do it that way. But our philosophy is we go in and clean it up. We can do it that way also. Because in reality, it's property owners.
Responsible.
Yes, in reality, we would have that choice to do that, but we don't choose that. But we could do that. So we just have never chosen to do that.
Well, at this time, I think it's better that council started really think about it. Right after that, maybe you should hold the, to certain degree, the residents, the property owner, to do so, to correct something.
Well, it would be nice if you had some property owners, if they, something fell into the stream and they were proactive and went down and got it, if they could. They got it out of the stream instead of always calling us and sending us down. And, you know, for the smaller things, that would be helpful for us.
Absolutely.
But we've set a, we've kind of set a standard now to where if anybody sees anything in the stream, they just hurry up and call us now, so.
Thank you.
Another quick question. You know, you said we're talking about short-term, midterm, long-term. What kind of timeframe, I mean, what's considered short-term, what's considered?
Well, it depends upon, like, one of our, one of our, one of our projects that we would like to do right away would be the lowering of the ball field and the, and the rack. That would be, and they're costing that right now. That would be dependent upon how long it takes for joint permit to be in the conservation district. So they're doing the design and getting that ready for the submits. They're also doing the, doing design for other projects too, because the other projects, like the back channel, I think it takes a different permit. So that permit may come in quicker than the ball field permit. So if that is the case, then we would move forward on the one that comes in first, because that's a, that's major, should be down number two.
Sure.
So as are the others.
But I mean, short-term is like within a year, within two years?
Yeah, within a year.
Mid-term is two years to five years, or?
Yeah. The term for permits through the DEP can be anywhere from six to nine months. How'd you know?
It takes more than that.
Sometimes a year. I mean, it just depends. And people don't understand, it's not us that's holding it up. It's, you know, it's...
It's the process.
It's the process. So we're ready to go whenever we get what we need to move. And in the meantime, we'll, you know, make sure that we have everything in and submitted that we need to have in and submitted, so that when we get the go-ahead, we're able to go, so.
And I think it was important for us in this last month or so, I mean, this last round of discussion, in calling out the, I'm calling the northern piece and the southern piece to this one. Because as those move forward, then if this is, I'm going to say, half a step behind or something, the ability to reference that there is progress on both ends and that this area in the middle is in the chain of making this all work as well. You know, that there is that reference in it. Those two projects, which are enormous in their undertaking of time and focus, I think is great, that we're able to say even this soon, since that first set of meetings happened this summer, that things are as far as they are. And that the other municipalities also with this get-together last Tuesday, that the other municipalities have things in the works. And being able, really, as we were talking about, what's emerged is that everybody has the opportunity, meaning the three municipalities have the opportunity to be working from the same playbook. They may be working on different, you know, places of this, but that they're understanding what each one is doing. So if there's also even a possibility for pursuing dollars from if there is a similar type of effort, then having the ability to join up to look at this. And with that mapping, really putting this piece in, I mean, the one that we're working on into this, and then calling out those others and evolving that over time, I mean, as updating and as discovering. It's great news.
And also the flood authority is going to be assisting us in the back channel and doing, after we get the permits, helping us through their dollars with some of the work back there, so that would be very helpful.
I think a lot of progress, I'd say, since the August meeting. And that sort of puts the caps down on how this is fitting into that regional effort and what we want out there. So I would move this to you as a group, as you were thinking about it, keeping it, going forward to the council that it appears that we're ready to do so.
Well, since we heard a lot about these things over here, let's emphatically say that I would make the motion to accept the, when we study so far, one, two, and three. Excuse me. There being other small things, not small, but very important, such as the meeting, the council, and the managers, engineer, their tracks. Is it necessary for something like that to put that in a motion? No need for it, because that's a routine that they will do monthly. And I hope that this is continued. Matter of fact, it was nice to talk to Mr. Galardus, who was present on the meeting. And he made a point to Upper St. Clair, that is your water. Upper St. Clair is saying, how do you know that's our water? Well, he made a very plain, if we're going to stop her in Bridgeville, then you'll see that's your water, because it's going to back up. He did a very excellent, excellent question to Upper St. Clair and Upper St. Clair group. He did very, and how do you know it's my water? Well, if we're going to stop it, you know it's our water. They realize that part of it. For when I get together from Lori and council, we're present, that these two community, they are very strong to work with us. Finally, they get on our table together. And I think in time, something will come very productive. That's my feeling, if this continues to be in our way.
Well, we're going to be meeting every other month.
Right.
So it's going to push each, each community to provide updates as far as what, where the projects are moving, that type of thing. So it's not something that you just meet once and it goes by the wayside and you never meet again and you never talk about it again and it's gone.
And I think although, I'm going to say subtle or small in its line, on page four, what we did do is reflect on, last time we really didn't have a lead-in for this, but it's the last two lines of the paragraphs here, where we, really based on last week's success, that as such diverse approaches to stormwater management take hold, this is meaning of the three municipalities and affecting these watersheds, Bridgeville and its neighbors will be well to each other informed about their respective proactive efforts in solving this regional challenge. That to me, while we've had a lot of focus on the drawings and the concept, you know, I mean, and these just ideas of the fact that something needs to change, that this introduction in saying, and being really the ones that have taken in that first step of identifying, you know what? We are ready to work and stay informed with whatever, what are happening in our neighbors' areas as well. And that we are doing this in a proactive way, because this is a regional challenge. That is something you can think in the, everything that comes after this. You know, no matter if the road ends up here or here, or, you know, if we have one type of stormwater solution or another, and technology changes even 10 years from now, and we want to, you know, incorporate those kinds of things into the development. The fact that you're saying this is one piece, we are committing to making our best proactive steps and working with your neighbors and doing so. And sort of identifying, or calling out that you're there, your understanding, the borough's understanding is that they are ready to do that as well.
So you mentioned something interesting to me, Carol, the potential of partnering with other areas and their projects. And I wonder from a vendor's perspective, if that doesn't make this whole thing potentially more attractive to somebody to get? But I don't know, can you, so let's make it up and this whole thing goes to RFP at some point. Can you cross borough lines like that and package things up? Or is that more complicated than helpful?
Well, from a municipal, I think there are a couple steps to it. I think it's helpful, I mean, to answer the last part of it. Is it complicated? A little bit, yeah. I mean, but that's what we're dealing with.
Nothing, it's a pre-clue, you can do it.
Correct. Meaning that in some sort of planning effort, if there were joint discussions and say this is one small chapter, you know, and other types of similar chapters are done for each of these other types of things, if that were combined into some sort of document, that the municipalities, through the municipalities planning, I guess we're stuck with this, have the ability to identify project developments of regional impact in the acronym world DRI, that's right. So development of regional impact. This becomes that development of regional impact. So I mean, it needs the multi-municipal participation, that type of thing. And there are stipulations that go along with that in the MPC. So from a perspective of putting that idea and these types of solutions in front of those well beyond the borough, there is a technical way to go about it.
So where does that, maybe I'm preliminary, where would that, is it with this every other month group that would have that strategic eye to how do we package these things up?
Yeah, yeah. And what is, what is helpful with us is the Upper St. Clair engineer and the Bridgeville engineer are different individuals, but of the same group. So they can communicate and say, okay, Bridgeville's looking at doing this here and Upper St. Clair is looking at doing this here. We may be able to combine these two, you know what I mean? And make it an multi-municipal. That would, that would be easier than, you know, us trying to combine something with Vettel, which is way up the watershed.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, that becomes a plus for us as far as just being in the loop as far as what they're doing and then also just knowing what's happening. We didn't really get into a watershed study we made, but we were less discussed where we were and what we were doing at this time. And, you know, we met for a couple hours. So we covered a lot of information and they're bringing back a lot of information to the table at the end of November. So, you know, I'm looking forward to keeping going and, you know, keeping the dialogue going. So that's a plus and it's first, so.
Is there potential for, is it easier to try and get funds on a more regional type level for projects like this, or?
Yes. And so that's where I was, just was trying to quickly pull up something to look at or, you know, identify that kind of thing. And that's the intent, of looking at what the regional impact is. So that, you know, from any sort of discussion or presentation or dialogue, that the more people that can be at the table to solve the problem is more attractive to anyone ready to listen to that, hear that.
Excuse me, not like, it seems like since our last meeting that this is not taking a regional approach, which is great. But do the other municipalities, is their project mirror in size, scope, and scale of what we're proposing here in Bridgeville? Like, is it equitable?
That's what we're going to look at at the next meeting. Because we showed them what we had as far as this goes. And they had some large projects planned. So they're going to have all of that information to us at the next meeting.
Like, it would be nice to see, like, you know, like, now we're going to share everything.
Yeah.
But like, 5,000 people to really take this huge bite of the apple. It'd be interesting to see what the other municipalities are doing.
Yeah.
It's like now this is a, you know, multi-municipal company, and it's sort of planning it for now.
Well, I think, again, I've been using the analogy like this first step. The fact that Bridgeville was able to, I mean, I think you were part of really organizing that effort, I mean, that get-together, calling that session together.
And gave it to you.
And then being able to, and working with Gateway.
Yeah.
And being able to put something on the table, guys, we're not just talking theory. We're looking at a concept of really getting at some specifics, because that is necessity. And that, I think, just was a real feather in the cap kind of thing. I mean, to be able to, because I think what, to your point, Joe, of thinking about the other municipalities of, all right, somebody's got a game plan to start, you know, taking things in, into action. And it would benefit everyone to bring something to the table. And for the purposes of, while it may not either be the same sort of scale or it may be a different type of development or, you know, initiative, if they're even like items of work that needs to be done and being able, you know, to have part of it being done in a couple of weeks in this end and then that crew mobilize, you know, further upstream or something to, you know, you've just, you've got some...
I think it has been done with the flood control project decades. Like, now, like, it's like the northern end and like, you're talking about the back channel. Has there been a talk like the flood control authority like expanding into the tributaries?
We had requested the Army Corps give permission to do meetings into the tributaries. We had requested that quite a while.
They did that in another municipality.
Yeah, and we returned out.
Why did you do it there?
I don't know.
It's not fair.
Yeah, we returned out. So, you know, with, with the new, you know, with all the issues that we're having now, it's probably a good time to request again.
Yeah.
Because they're willing to do it. It's just that, you know, we did a resolution, all of the, all the participants signed off. You know, we sent it off and that, along with the actua five requests, everything was turned out. That was right after Hurricane October. Yeah. So probably now would be a good time to request again.
Okay.
Yes.
We're done with?
We are.
Okay.
Move on to small business?
Excuse me, Mr. Jones. Question to you, Carol. Is this, would it be a good idea to put this in a comprehensive plan that we have present right now? This one, two, three, and four that we are discussing? I know comprehensive plan, you need public care, etc., 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 the old things. The reason I'm thinking of that, especially comprehensive plan, the government agents, the money, and state, etc., etc., they have a chance. They have a chance to see this in front of them at all the time. If it is any funding or anything, it's already there. Do we have to review the comprehensive plan? Which at this point, I don't know if we can afford it, it's about forty thousand dollars. If this can be incorporated there, you probably will be a good person to answer that.
I would say that.
We'll tell it, we'll tell it, go through with new comprehensive plan.
Right, so, um, I'm going to say based on what we've been working on as sort of the different chapters, I'll call it, of this effort over the last year or so. You have a lot of information that is building on one another specific to this neighborhood type of planning. From a perspective of the comprehensive plan, I think that there is other work and affiliated with that effort that goes into either a different level of thinking or meaning a broader level of thinking, which is important. I think this is the way that you all have been working toward, I mean, getting to where we are now is looking at the specific neighborhood level. If you have, the municipality has some general planning goals and objectives. This effort fits into that set of points. And I think that you have the ability to keep this moving forward without getting into the entirety of the comprehensive plan. And then I'm going to say, all right, on a parallel track or sort of on a side track, there's probably some work associated with the broader thinking, the comprehensive planning level, that does need to be updated so that, I mean, you truly have the consistency of everything. You know, we, we got into, what, about a year, two years ago with the zoning ordinance update for some of the downtown efforts. I mean, you have, you have like these multiple planning elements that are all things that, I mean, they were born from, you know, some of the ideas years ago and that you're now, I mean, you've really taken to this implementation that we're really getting them down and keeping those specifics moving. But if at some point in time, the comprehensive plan did have an update, I think this would feed into sort of that natural resources chapter, as well as the economics chapter, economic development chapter and the infrastructure chapter. I mean, and I think that's what we were trying to do is also think about how do each of those topics relate to the specifics of the potential, you know, shift of this area. So that translates into, I think there is value in keeping this level of energy and effectiveness at the detail focus. Keep that moving forward with, through the eye on, all right, ensuring that this is, that our overall community objectives and things of that nature are, you know, parallel with that.
So it could be in time too.
Yes, it could, in time, correct.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Because I'm referring to Tim's question, is there any money for this? I believe that in a comprehensive plan, it's more feasible to the government agency for these things. Yes, no, but it is in some way.
I think, I mean, there may be some merit to that, but I think the fact that you have, you have the correct.
Different type of trends.
This is, this is done. I mean, you have, like, you're ready to go on to step five or six, I mean, whatever, you know, type of thing you're ready to move on to with the fact, rewind here. The whole notion that this discussion happened last week with the other municipalities in the watershed, to me, is much greater and its potential effect to making some of this happen than to say, all right, let's, in the near term, work on some higher level comprehensive planning. I just, the momentum of last week to me, coupled with the specifics of where this concept is at this point in time and the two other projects that you have going on in the back channel and at the park. That, that is a big plate of, you know, responsibility and action and great things happen. I'm not on your panel, but I'm near your body. But I think from a perspective of being able to keep the eye on all of those things at the forefront would be what I would offer out back out to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you complete your scope then?
And we have the other detailed drawings and those are all available for the borough. We use our background work, kind of thing. But from a perspective of this case, there are two other phases of things that when it's time to get into, you know, more of the engineering side and the coordination with Gateway and all those kinds of things. But from a perspective of a baseline.
So in all essence, really before us is, do we sleep on this for a month or do we recommend for council tonight?
Correct. And right in last month, the notion was the anticipation of moving forward based on.
Yeah, I'm there, I don't think it's helpful to know, we got a little bit of a potential partnership that doesn't change. Yeah.
I agree. All the dinner table motion?
Make the motion.
That's it, good.
Okay, so the motion on the table is to forward this on to the council for approval, for review? Okay.
Yeah.
Whatever they're, whatever they're.
Lovely.
In the.
Henry Joe.
This has left a glory, this not necessarily because of the county for approval, does it?
No.
Because it's not in a comprehensive.
Right.
Absolutely correct.
Okay, there's a motion, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? Or pass? Okay. Uh, new business?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I believe that we don't have this list.
Excuse me, is that probably common?
Maybe some people, some people would like this.
Is that probably common?
Would like to say something.
I had a comment, I had a question, excuse me, I'm interrupting. Number one, we came here, thirty people came here, they're in a court. Because, I want to ask you a question about the motion you just made. Is that made to review the plan or to accept the plan?
Well, council, I don't know whether you've done your review before, before they passed that.
I want to know if the motion was made to the council to review Carol's plan or to accept it.
To re.
Recommend this?
Recommend.
We only recommend.
Recommend to council.
Recommend what?
Any commission recommends the plan, council makes a decision whether they accept the plan.
I see. Well, there's probably thirty people here who would like to comment on it. We haven't allowed discussions, if that's okay. I would like you to interject that in your agenda.
Would you please?
There's a restoration section.
Please pass.
There was no, there was no sheet on the thing, I can't make it up myself.
It was there.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, someone, I'm not saying.
Well, it was there.
I'm sure it was.
Okay, Bob.
Yeah. Excuse me. Yeah, well, I, excuse me. The, well, let me start here. I think that at one time, eighty-eight percent of every retail dollar that was being spent in a five mile radius around Ridgeville was being spent in Ridgeville Central Business District. And in this business district, which is the Baldwin Street Business District. What happened was, excuse me, the enormous I-79 occurred, enormous traffic congestion occurred. Uh, the Ridgeville Central Business District, which was the main tax revenue producer for the community, collapsed, thirty-five or forty businesses left. And as a result, over the years, Ridgeville people never had the same quality of public facilities and other programs that the people around us did. And Collier, Upper St. Clair and South Ed, just to give you an example, and what I'm getting at is, you, I think you should, the comprehensive plan must be involved in this project of Carol's. Her plan should be adopted to not obstruct the basic comprehensive tax revenue producing plan. Excuse me. Uh, my, what I was getting at is, to give you the example, the average family income for a family in Ridgeville, I mentioned this to you before, is fifty-five thousand dollars. In Upper St. Clair, it's a hundred and twenty-six. And at South Ed, it's ninety. In Collier, I mean, we've essentially, the people here have essentially had nothing because we've been unable to succeed in creating a central business district that produces enough activity. This plan, by the way, guys, this is a plan that someone gave me about five days ago. This is Baldwin Street in nineteen forty-five, where there were forty-five retail businesses and two hundred and fifty people. Okay? And after this developed, the central business district developed. I'm not sure what the years were, but it was the next several decades after that. And what I, I, I'm very much in favor of Carol's perspective and energy to solve the flooding problem. The damage has been done from time to time and the millions and losses are enormous. But I think the, I think your plan needs modification. By the way, this is just, this is an example of Carol's plan. The Bowery Road is a little closer than that. But essentially, this is Bowery Road, this is Baldwin Street. This is approximately where the cement company is. And this is where the McLaughlin intersection is. Carol's plan primarily wants to make the entire area primarily a flood plain. Correctly, a flood plain. And that bothers me in my respect that, I think, from the different engineers I've talked to, my proposal, let me just mention one more thing. If I'm not mistaken, these buildings in the, this is Baldwin Street. The Bowery Road traffic has been transferred to Baldwin Street, it's still on in two lanes. These buildings, if I'm not mistaken, are to be placed on pillars or ten-story vertical beams or something or.
There cannot be habitable space.
Underneath.
In the flood plain. And so the balance of that is using the, the concept is identifying that the ground levels can be utilized for parking.
Yeah, but my point is, and this is, this concept that Carol's proposing is done along the shore throughout eastern United States and the west coast. Because of the storm surge, they just place all the buildings up in twelve feet high so they're not watering around it. But my problem with that is, I, this is my counter-proposal, right? Uh, I don't like giving up eight acres of prime retail land that could be turned into probably the largest business district in Ridgeville and triple the tax revenue production of the central business district. And this plan can be modified and explained to. Now, this is my plan. I might, rather than the flood plain, I think it's a mistake to make Ridgeville a flood plain the more the communities are flooded. I think the flood plain or the retention pond should be built here, eight hundred yards north of Ridgeville in Upper St. Clair. This is a twenty square acre piece of land that's vacant. That's something that would be ten times more detrimental for all floodwater than this one. And I'd just like to go on. My, my modified proposal, Carol, is, excuse me, this is Bowery Road. Excuse me, this is, here, I'll stand. That's Bowery Road and this is Baldwin Street. I suggest, I don't, I, it's great, this is a regional problem, but I, whether you think you're going to get Upper St. Clair to start tearing down three hundred thousand dollar homes to build retention ponds, that's not going to happen. And they're very nice people and they're very cooperative. But I think that we, our plan should make sure that Ridgeville officials solve Ridgeville's problem in Ridgeville. And the way you do that is, you take the creek, this is the Baldwin Street Bridge. The blue is the McLaughlin Creek. These are the three bridges in front of the cement company that have been too small for seventy-five years. I, I, I've suggested that you double the width of the creek bed from thirty to sixty feet, double the depth of the creek bed and make it whatever is adequate. Excuse me, and these gradual turns with the hydraulic engineers telling me, these sharp ninety degree turns that are here and here, that's always a bad idea in floodwaters, Carol will tell you. Excuse me, and my, my further proposal to salvage this area and to turn this area into the, by far the largest and most successful business district in Ridgeville is, excuse me, to make the area that Carol's plan calls, it's a flood plain, that would be between Baldwin Street and Bowery Road, turn it into a four hundred car parking lot. And to not elevate the buildings twelve feet off the ground to this, this series of retail stores. Excuse me. But that those twenty or however, whatever real estate development can get to occupy those places. The key component to a successful business district, one other thing I forgot, the dotted lines. After widening the creek to sixty feet, after making it however deep you're supposed to make it, I think it should be encased in a fourteen high foot concrete wall. And other engineers have suggested the same thing. But anyway, back to this, the basic, an essential formula, formula in making a business district is, you essentially have to have parking spaces that the consumer motors pass by the city. You have to have a storage entrance that is very close to it. They want to be able to park, walk in the storage entrance and buy something. That's what will make this proposal, stream of economics, be successful. The other feature that I have there is the, making Baldwin Street part of the, a four lane wide couple. Baldwin Street, in my plan, would be two lanes wide going east. Bowery Road would be made two lanes wide going west for Washington Avenue. And this section of Washington Avenue would be made four lanes wide, at least, I'm sorry, at least that section of Bowery Road would be made four lanes wide to Washington Avenue. This would do a great many things for the people in Upper St. Clair and Duffel Park. They, to get to and from, uh, Interstate Highway Seventy-Nine, they come down Bowery Road. They come down Hook School Road, McLaughlin Road. They also, the other two main roads in the community, as we all know, are Lessland Road, Mayfair Road. But my point is, by using what my plan would double the traffic flow and reduce the traffic congestion by fifty percent easily. It would run ten thousand cars a day right in front of twenty new or modified retail businesses on Baldwin Street. Would make them entirely successful. And what I added, these red squares here, this, by the way, once again, this is a McLaughlin Run, Bowery Road intersection. This is that area at the time where there was a pool room and various commercial buildings. But I'm suggesting is that that area is already zoned commercial. I think you should zone it for ten-story high-rise apartments. I think you should zone it for ten-story high-rise apartments to the thousand people living in three or four of these high-rise apartments that would walk to the twenty businesses on Baldwin Street. Okay? And then, that's essentially the plan. This is just a drawing that I made of the concept. I, I, one thing to sit on here, that I totally disagree with is, the, that proposal by Carol and her company, a highly competent, timely, and award-winning, capable engineer, has got to be made to fit into Ridgeville's comprehensive plan. I'm not talking about President Washington Avenue, the President Washington Avenue Central Business District is an enormous traffic congestion problem. And six different engineers have all told you guys how to solve it the same way, but nothing's been done since nineteen eighty. My point is, I think that, well, the central business district can have its traffic problem solved without, without enormous cost. But I don't want to sacrifice the Baldwin Street, Bowery Road area for a retention pond, is that so? I think the retention pond should be, I think the creek bed should be made so enormous, so deep, walled in. I don't care what they do in Upper St. Clair or Duffel Park, that way we would be able to protect our community.
Okay, thank you, Bob, sir.
I don't know who else is on this.
Fred?
Oh, you can go ahead.
Hi, Fred Valentino, two-five-one, they have in Ridgeville, they've been in Ridgeville since nineteen forty-six. Know the creek pretty well. I, I just, I guess I've just had it up to here with giving St. Clair. How much property did you say?
Twenty acres.
Twenty acres. I mean, I, I don't know if that's accurate.
It's a drawing, right?
And I also lived in Ridgeville, all of those businesses were on Baldwin Street, and now neither.
Not a little?
Not a little flood. Or if it was a flood, it was a flood every fifteen, twenty years. So, we have to ask ourselves, I guess, why did those properties not flood back in nineteen forty, nineteen fifty, nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy? Where was all the development? Was it in Ridgeville? No, it was in St. Clair. And you're giving, by this comprehensive plan, you're giving St. Clair McLaughlin Park, right?
Giving them a flood?
Well, giving them a flood area, flood, a flood primary area. Because you're lowering, I understand that, you're lowering McLaughlin Park to create a flood primary area there?
Retention pond.
Is that right?
Retention pond.
Retention pond.
Retention pond. And then you're giving all of this to St. Clair also for a flood, flood plain? I mean, what's St. Clair getting under? And if, again, I, I'm sorry, I really don't know you, but if you think that that agreement on page four is gonna hold St. Clair to a comprehensive agreement with Ridgeville, just think back to two years ago, remember Bednar's Estates was being built. And we knew that some of that water was gonna come to Ridgeville. And we filed lawsuit against St. Clair. Now, did St. Clair reason with us on that issue? No. So, I don't agree, I, I don't agree that St. Clair would put Ridgeville's plans first before their own plans. I don't, do you follow me? I don't trust St. Clair's.
It will benefit to them as well, Fred.
Tell me, do you, what, what, what plans does St. Clair have on fire or immediately to attend it? Where are they going to, are they gonna build?
Oh, none of us brought what plans, well, we had our plan there as far as this one goes. But Bethel, St. Clair, and us all have short-term, mid-term, and long-term plans that we're all bringing to the next meeting, so each municipality can review it and see what type of plan it is, and understand it, and where it is, and if it would impact us. And if it would impact us, we can ask questions and that type of thing. So, we, we had one meeting, and that was just so that we could open up discussions. So, we aren't, right now, the way our relationship is, we have no idea what's going on. And we at least need to talk to each other, because, you know, like it or not, I need to know that Whole Foods has stormwater detention underneath, underneath their, you know, their facility. You know, I need to know these type of things when people ask me questions.
Yeah, and I know you, that you really don't have, you don't have a lot of leverage here. St. Clair doesn't have leverage.
Well, yeah, and, and, and as far as we're concerned, we're, we're going to do what we need to do within our community to, to make it the best that it can be.
So, building two sets?
So, put that retention pond in St. Clair, is what I'm asking.
Pardon me?
Put that retention pond in St. Clair, Martin Bridges, not make Baldwin Street and McLaughlin Park the flood plain that holds the water.
Yeah, you're giving us two sets.
I mean, that's, you know, I just don't, I just don't agree with you, I just don't agree with, I...
Well, the, the ball field isn't going to be a detention pond. Ball field's going to be a ball field. When we went in to talk to the DEP, the ball field isn't going to be a detention pond that just sits and grows, um, cow and lilies and that type of thing.
It's gonna be holding.
It's, it's going to be a ball field that's used as a ball field. And whenever a heavy rain comes, its second use is going to be a runover as far as if we need it. But it's going to be a usable ball field. It's not going to be something that just sits there and waits to hold water. We're going to use, it's just going to be lower.
Not to interrupt you, because I, I think it is great that we're having this two-way discussion. I think a great deal will come out of it. But the size of the baseball field, talking to hydraulic engineers that I've talked to, will essentially do, it will be filled up in fifteen minutes, plus. The twenty-eight acre piece of land that you have, I don't know, just eight-hundred yards north of Ridgeville, we're talking about something substantial. I can't remember if it was a Army Corps of Engineers here, or one of the other engineers told me, I asked them, how would you use that land, that piece of land to protect Ridgeville? He said something about dam doors that open up automatically, I'm not, I'm not sure. But like, I, 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 well, I seen them do New Orleans, when I was with FEMA down there, the, the trade flood. They lowered eighty acres of land, and that made a difference. I, your effort is noble, but I don't think lowering the, the baseball field down there's gonna help much. But I think you should do it. I think putting those...
Well, the reason, the reason that we're not lowering any more of the park, because we would, we would lower the whole park if we could, but we cannot.
Yeah.
Because we've used DC and our monies to upgrade that park.
Yeah, yeah.
We have not used them to upgrade the ball field. And once you've used state monies to upgrade a park, you have, you have to keep the park apart. So, that's the only reason that we have to stop at all.
I understand, and I agree with you. My main point here is, the...
We know...
Once the water, once somebody determines what the hell the watershed is from Bethel Park and Upper St. Clair coming to Ridgeville, we're, we're at the bottom of the run. We have to know what capacity is, so we can build a channel where the existing creek bed is and, and make it big enough to handle whatever happens. I don't care, I want the channel made so big and deep and fast flowing. I don't care what they do up there, because I don't think we're gonna be doing very much for us, because, as Fred mentions, we have no leverage. You know, I, I talked to one of the, I talked to Matt, the manager of Upper St. Clair, Adam, about a week ago. And they told me that they have sixty-four, sixty-five retention ponds built already, and they police them very effectively, and they probably do. But an Army Corps of Engineer told me that the federal regulations, the state regulations that came in, that mandated that the communities upstream had to build retention ponds, didn't come in until near two thousand. Two thousand and something like that. So, it's, it's, we have to solve Ridgeville's problems on Ridgeville's property. And from the engineers I've talked to, they said, make it a concrete tunnel from the Baldwin Street Bridge all the way down, or from the cement company. And the one engineer said, take it all the way down to where it intersects with the original creek bed of Charger Street. That makes sense, and that would preserve that shopping, that Baldwin Street Shopping Center can be twice as large and twice as valuable, you're right, than the central business district, by far.
I like the idea of getting the water out here instead of holding it in town.
Right, that's exactly right.
You're asking us to hold the water in our town.
I, I agree with that, too. Get, get out. My, my last comment here, Laurie, if we talk to Collier, talking about regional planning on, on that shunt, on that, on the water on the north end?
We haven't had a chance, actually.
Okay.
We haven't had a chance.
And, and the last time a permit was applied for to clean that, with the Army Corps of Engineers, was two thousand and four.
Two thousand and four. And we're...
See, I, I would, I would appreciate maybe a resolution from the council, a recommendation, a resolution to the council to apply for a permit every single year with Collier to clean that cesspool up. That's, that's an abomination when you drive to the Bridgeville, and you look at both sides of that bridge, and the mud is up to the ceiling, and there's no water flow. Agreed?
The bridge, the bridge coming through town?
No, the, the shopping center.
Shopping center.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's a charter, it's not a flood authority.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not for Ridgeville.
Isn't that part of, I understand that, isn't that part of the shunt, in full project?
That's a part of the Army Corps of Engineers project, and the Chargers' flood authority, that's not for Ridgeville.
Okay.
So, I can let them know that. I can let them know that that's, that's not ours, so, you know, that, they can put that on their maintenance plan. But that's, that's who maintains that. And the Army Corps of Engineers do come and do inspections, so that's part of the James Fulton project.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so that hasn't been, that has, we haven't requested about sixty thousand for you, is that right?
I don't know the last time that the, that the, that the Army Corps has done an inspection. They do inspections on different parts of the project. Um, you know, the James Fulton project is, is, is large, um, so I don't know the last time they did an inspection, but I can talk to...
Did I get a recommendation for the time you commissioned, you guys write a letter to the council asking them, possibly, require about the charger, the Chargers' flood authorities?
Drudging.
Drudging, yeah, section, I mean, again?
I don't think it's a matter of, 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 recommend, recommendation. The borough is a member of the Chargers' flood control board.
And our project is fifty, these are fifty thousand a year, that's right.
And the borough pays an assessment every year today.
Yeah.
So, there's a, there's a voice at the table with the borough, you know?
Yes, I'm, I'm on the exact same one. I'll let Fred know.
So, you have some policy?
Yeah.
Excuse me, Laurie, I wanna ask you something about, I wanna ask you something, I wanna ask you something about dredging. In the past two or three weeks, talking to three engineers, I always had, got the impression that we really weren't allowed to mess around with dredging or changing the creek. And a PennDOT engineer told me that there are places in flood-prone areas like Ridgeville where they encase the entire creek, you know, one's the right side, left side, and the bottom, concrete, and I, I mentioned the...
Fifty feet up, fifty feet up and down from a bridge.
Yeah, but, but, but he told me, he said, no, no, you can do the whole thing. And I said, no, no, I argued with him. And he said, it's been done. Then, a week later, I was talking to one of the guys from, I think, DEP or Army Corps, I forget. But anyway, they both told me the same thing, and he gave me an example, he said, oh, yes, as a matter of fact, he gave me the name of the place, I'll find out what it is. But they put, after they widened and deepened the creek bed, they put walls down both sides and put a concrete floor on the whole thing. He said it speeds the, the flow of floodwater volumes greatly. And, and the engineer from PennDOT, he lives in Ridgeville, by the way, he goes to Bethel Church, he recommended taking that three-sided, very wide channel, past Sill Falls, around a gradual turn behind, alongside Fred's five homes, all the way down to where it intersects with that, that area that you were talking about, or... Because I'm just thinking, when that's flooded, how will it help the harsh floodwater? It in, it, there's, and anyway, I, I just think...
I wanna, I don't mean to cut you off.
No, no, I appreciate, I appreciate your, 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 I wanna say something.
All right, so, I just have, well, a number of things that I've been thinking about based on this discussion the last little bit, but I would, I would like to be clear for the record that when the question was asked about the relationship of the comprehensive plan, it was identified, there was a cost element that was part of that sort of question and thinking about things. As part of our work, meaning a firm with whom I've worked for twenty-some years, we do comprehensive planning. I understand and appreciate and work with many communities throughout the Commonwealth on comprehensive planning. I am not identifying that comprehensive planning isn't important. I was identifying from a perspective of the momentum that is being achieved here as part of this focused area, that it was important to keep this momentum going. This, if there is time or resources or of those things that are so, are associated with actually doing an update to the overall comprehensive plan, or were to be something that also happened with multi-municipal efforts, you know, at some point, then I think it would be beneficial. In the context of some of the discussions that we have had over the last several months about priorities for where dollars are spent or authorized and budgeted in the annual budgets and things like that, I know that there are many, many things that people have identified would be desirable to put on the list. There are some other things, I think, even associated with this plan that may be a more, a higher priority in the immediate realm of time. And I just wanna identify that, that I'm recognizing the significance of comprehensive planning. This has a potential relationship to it or contribute, contribution to informing things in the comprehensive plan. But I also know and am sensitive to the discussions that the borough has had, as part of this process even, about the allocation of borough resources and where those dollars in the immediate, short term could be identified, so, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, Johnny Nigent? Nigent?
We were told this time that we, we were present, he's...
I just...
Oh, okay. Jacques James, okay, you got anything?
No.
Okay, Jess? Marcus?
Yeah, same thing.
Okay, Mason?
Just here, I'm just...
Okay, John, just here, I'm just...
Could I speak just briefly? Yeah. Several hats. Hat number one, my favorite one is civil engineering professor Pitt. I coordinate the senior design project. We have a strong team studying McLaughlin Run flash flood watership problem from an engineering standpoint. I invited, I asked permission to invite them here to get a real world experience on how this works. And, of course, they came this evening. They are doing a comprehensive study, including a lot of hydrology and hydraulic smart. They are developing a model of a watershed which will be able... They are developing a model of a watershed which will be able to tell us, did you get two and a half inches of rain in an hour? How many C F S are going to get the bridge? That sort of thing. They're also looking at the constriction under Commercial Street, the culvert under, what, where really it plugs up first. They are in contact with your friends at Upper St. Clair, and trying very hard to come up with an objective opinion, which will be completely unofficial. They're not registered engineers, but they will have a recommendation which we will make available to you. The Senator Pitt?
Yeah.
Paul, you're all being welcome to come hear their presentation. That's my first hat. Now, my second hat is, I write this silly column called ironically water right through the bridge, and I'm kind of curious, is this public knowledge? Is this report available? Am I allowed to write about it? Or is this, you know, I'm, the last thing I want to do is undercut you, you, the council Dino, but if indeed this is what you're proposing, I wonder if the general public knows, I wonder if they are aware, if you're going to write off Baldwin Street.
It's a, it's a...
Oh, that's my question.
It's a proposed plan, proposed design.
Concept.
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 Concept for possible solution. I understand, but is that available for the...
Yeah, this is public.
If it is, that's okay.
No, it is, it's out.
Yeah, we've been, uh, over the last, right, over the last year, there have been three phases of...
I understand, yeah, I have a copy of it.
And so, you know, we get one from Laurie, she'll have all that. So from a perspective of the borough trying to understand what all the pieces are, was a big part of the first piece. I think the other elements that have evolved over time since May of 2018 to now is the area, and I think this speaks to your first hat point, of it's anticipated that there is another, there are two other types of parallel efforts, meaning in the north and in the south of this, that are all needing to be flushed down, right? And so this is the first foyer into the discussion of getting to the specifics of two and three.
I understand.
So I think that from a perspective of even reviewing this and all of the comments and the evolution of this, that the, the borough has continued each and every time to say, all right, we are here, now what's next? And so this is not, look at, right, I'm just saying for the purpose of the room, because I think there were also some other comments while I was speaking, that this is the, every single time that this is discussed, one other piece of the puzzle gets onto the table. And what that picture on that piece of the puzzle is, we, some of them we don't know yet, but we know needs to fit, so I think it's just really important in what all you guys are looking at, that that's also something from where the borough's been, where the borough is today.
I get the impression that it would be okay for my students to have a copy of this plan.
This is a public forum, we've been doing these as part of planning...
And I probably shouldn't lie to Paul.
You should, you should, you should.
No?
Yes, I don't want to undercut them. That, that's a separate thing, okay.
No, thanks for pulling knowledge to let, let the citizens of Bridgeville know that they should have it.
But you know it, you know, the question is, you know, I used to live here. I lived here from 34 to 63. My mother lived here until 1922. I still have a lot of friends here. A little uneasy that the typical Bridgeville resident has no idea that you're considering writing off Baldwin Street.
Well, that's one issue.
I know, I should, I know.
I didn't know that was a danger.
Yeah, I think, so just a couple of comments quickly, I think the suggestion that we're writing off Baldwin Street is a certain tone to it, that this meeting is never intended to strike. I think the idea of writing off Baldwin Street is not the tone or concept that this plan has come up with. The suggestion that it's turning into two cesspools and we have no care for the aesthetic value of Bridgeville as Bridgeville residents, almost all of us, is just not true. I'm very open to hearing other opinions, that's the purpose of this forum, let's do that and come to a solution, but the us versus them dynamic that has evolved is a little bit weird to me. We're volunteers trying to come up with a solution. To Bob's point, Bridgeville has to solve Bridgeville's problems, let's do that in a constructive way, not a way that suggests we're creating two cesspools, we want everybody to be mosquito-ridden and we're going on our way, it's just not what's going on here. So let's do it in a way that's helpful.
I don't agree, Bridgeville has to solve Bridgeville's problem. I like the fact they're talking Upper St. Clair, I think the watershed.
I'm hopeful, I think that's a promising sign, but I'm with everybody else that I'm not banking on that, and it's, it's a little bit ironic to me, the suggestions of everybody saying, don't count Upper St. Clair, and then the immediate suggestion is, make Upper St. Clair put the retention pond in. Well, why do we think that's such an easy thing to do? So there are alternate ways of looking at it, I'm, I'm open to that, but I want to do it in a constructive way.
Mr. Chairman? I think just for like a comment for the record is that this planning effort has been going on for a year and a half, maybe even longer, it's been, I feel like it's been forever.
Always advertised on the calendar.
Yeah, and they've been very open, public meetings, and the plan has been taken on many aspects of emotion. I remember when this whole started, I, the whole focus of the plan was Barrow Hill Road sinking, falling apart, we got to do Barrow Hill Road, and everyone cared about Barrow Hill Road. And then, I think before that, it was, we didn't like traffic coming into town, let's put containment ponds up on the hill, there was some funky design about that. So we've been always like jumping and thinking with emotions and not what's actually the bigger picture, and that's what's been interesting about this planning effort. So it isn't like we're just jumping and making two cesspools. This whole effort started with really a traffic problem, basically, because the road is falling apart.
Yeah, excuse me, one second, do you think a public official telling you, this is planning commission, that you, they don't want the traffic coming into town?
I don't think that, I don't think that was said at all, but that's just what you said.
No, happens to, I just, it's been emotions that's been steering this, this planning effort, and it kind of got, been bending.
Consumer waters, consumer waters volume has been the failure of the community, because 50%, two studies have shown that 50% of the people in a four-mile radius around here have been avoiding coming into Bridgeville for 35 years. That's why we need business districts to generate tax revenues, and I don't like the fact that the Barrow, I'm sorry, Barrow and Baldwin. Yes, and I want to mention one other thing. With Carol's long, Bob, I'm sorry, we're long overdue, and I'm sorry, there are other people, and there's other people, sorry, let me just give them a chance. Did you have anything else, John?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we live on Baldwin Street, how long is it like?
What do you say, ma'am?
Teresa Irwin.
Teresa Irwin, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how long of ideas you have before you do the Baldwin Street?
This concept is probably a 20-year plan.
Oh, okay, so we have a very long time.
Yeah, it's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, there's a lot of, still more planning that needs to go into it.
Okay.
We're, we're just at the concept stage of trying to put together some ideas, put together some, some solutions, possible solutions, to, to resolve some of the, some of the flooding issues, some of the transportation issues.
Okay, so that's a long-term plan, that's that long-term that you're talking about, not the short.
Correct.
So what's the short and the medium versus the long for the...
What's your name, ma'am?
Joe, I'll just say, I live on the block.
Okay. Um, the, the, we're working on short, medium, and long.
So what is, the short is?
The, the short is, is as Laurie had described, is, is looking at trying to do some issues with, um, the, the vault, the McLaughlin Park issue.
Which I live next to.
And at the, the, um...
Trash rack.
The trash rack in the north end, with trying to get the core to clean out some of the, the water on the south, on the north end.
Okay, so the medium, and you're saying that's like one to two years?
No. There are, we went to meet with D E P, okay, and there are, there are several projects that we're looking at. We're looking at McLaughlin Park, we're looking at a trash rack, we're looking, we're working with Allegheny County regarding the bridge at, at Row Road Street and Bauer Hill Road with a pier that always blocks up. We're looking at the culvert under Commercial Street, it's too small, there actually needs to be a bridge there, it needs to be heightened, and there needs to be a bridge there. Um, we're looking at, um, there needs to be a wall when you go around, um, uh, where the Dairy Delight is, um, we're looking at the back channel, we're also looking at an, an entrance, um, behind the beer warehouse, uh, an entrance that's concrete to go down into the stream, um, so there are many projects that we're looking at.
Okay, so that's in the short?
Well, they're...
That's in the short? What's in the short?
Well, what happens is, we took all of those things to the D E P, okay? All of it depends on the D E P. A, an application to the D E P, we're working on the specs, the drawings, the costing of all of those things.
Okay.
When we turn them into the D E P, each of them requires a different type of permit.
Okay, so back in 2013 when I, I flooded, and we made the comment about, why can't the D E P come in and claim the creek? They can't do it, you can't touch it. You said, and he agreed, we can do it and claim the creek. No, back in 2013, we were told we are not going in that creek and pipes that water. So now, what happens in 2018, that you're saying Upper St. Clair and Buffalo Park send letters to the residents and say they're allowed to go in there and claim that. So right down at Bridgeville, we're supposed to call municipality, and you've got, yet you're saying the resident can go in and claim it.
We went...
That creek is not my property, my property borders it, but it's not my property.
If you actually look at the survey, it actually is your property.
Nope.
But anyway.
I had that survey done.
Anyway, okay. Whatever, okay. Anyway, the borough of Bridgeville cleaned the entire stream, we still have a contractor here.
Oh, they did not get down to 11:27 o'clock on the...
Well, we went all the way.
Hmm, maybe different.
Okay, maybe different. Anyway, we still have a contractor here, he's fixing the Maple Street wall. We've had the contractor here since June 21st, okay? All of these different projects take different D E P permits, some are a D E P permit and a joint permit with Conservation District. So when we apply for these permits, it is then out of our hands. Some permits take a year, some, some permits take four to six months. So whenever we get a permit back, we are ready to do whatever, whatever project we get a permit back first. So if it's a larger project, we're going to make arrangements to be able to do that. If it's a, if it's a shorter-term project, it, it will take us a shorter period of time to lower McLaughlin, McLaughlin Park than it will to do the larger project in the back channel, because that not only needs to be...
So that's what I was starting with my question, like what is considered short-term, what is considered middle?
Short-term is, is, yeah, short-term...
What is considered long, obviously, ball, when you're telling me it's a long-term plan, it'll be 20 years down the road.
Well, the, that...
When I was here in 2013, the other complaint I had was the sewer system, and you said in 10 years, McLaughlin Run would have a parallel line running through.
McLaughlin...
Is that still the fact?
McLaughlin Run is, is being taken over by Alcatlan. We went, we went to a meeting a couple months ago, they're taking over some main lines. We have cameras, all, all of them are McLaughlin Run line, um, for defects, we have to have any defects fixed, of which we have, and Alcatlan is taking over the lines, and they're going to be responsible for a parallel line. So they have made that determination.
About 2023?
That's going to be, um, Alcatlan is going to be taking that, so, and they made that decision, not us. So, but the projects, we're getting them all to the D E P and the, and the Conservation District, so we, it's, it's out of our hands once it's there. And like I said, some can take four to six months, some can take a year, but whatever comes back to us, we will move forward and we'll do the project. Because the back channel not only needs to be cleaned out, but the back channel needs to be open so that McLaughlin Run flows. And as we talked about, the Charter Valley Flood Authority needs to also do some work on their part of the James Fulton, um, portion that you can see when you're coming across the home D V O, that's, that's that part.
Doesn't that, that have to be deep in there, considerably, Laurie, so that McLaughlin Run would get away?
Yeah, because it, it doesn't work right there.
Yeah.
It doesn't flow.
When it floods, then you have two creeks that are flooding some of the pond.
And they just stop, yeah, they just stop, it doesn't work.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, Pat? Thank you. Thank you all for, for attention to this project over the past years, and I look forward to seeing you on Thursday at the spaghetti dinner for the Lions Club. Thank you. Look to see anyone else there, it's a nice, uh, nice organization, so it's most appreciated. And I look forward to seeing the efforts that you put forth here move forward. So thank you, thank you, Pat. Council, any other?
Well, just for the record, we are, our priority right now, it is a flood. No, but then I'd question, that is a flood right now, we work on many things that Laurie just tell you, that sort of relate to, to the flood. This project here is completely different, they will have the flood wait 20 years from now, but we tried to do this way before then. Some of this could...
This is over a year?
This is it, yes.
A year and a half?
Right.
In the making?
Many of these things, it didn't happen before, the, the pattern, the water pattern changed drastically, I mean, I'm, I'm here 50, 56 years, I, I never remembered this. Many other people that are here longer than that, they don't remember this. It's, it's just the, the atmosphere, the wood, we know that, everybody tells you, Mr. Red probably can tell you that, the student probably can tell you that, there is a lot of change in the patterns of the water system now, maybe there are better terms that the student can use, but our focus is to save Baldwin Street before it get destructive. This is what we're working on. And I said many times, let's do it in a hurry so it's not self-destructive, the way it is now, well, as you can see, we lose one home, we lose another home, we lose Carol, this, we want to do immediately some further flood, and immediately it'll be a year, two, like you already told me.
This isn't the first of bridges in Florida that's...
Well, not this bad, this was bad.
And you know, the development in Upper St. Clair and Buffalo Park is going to continue and continue.
No question, they got to run, and we don't, we have to prevent that.
Don't do anything to Baldwin Street that prevents it from be turning into a first-class shopping district. That's, that's the mistake we're leaning toward, but Carol, Carol will do what you tell her to do. If you tell her to, to identify the problems in the community, their financial, the limited funds of their families, their annual incomes, the history of the failure of our business districts, so fix it so it's, it can be transformed into a...
Well, Laurie and council is working extremely hard on the flood right now.
What we're, we're trying to look at from that.
Well, that's, that's the problem, that's the...
That's it.
Okay. You have anything else, John?
Motion to the chairman?
Okay. Second?
Not sure if one with the chair. Would there be an October meeting then, or is this take care of all that?
We don't have anything on the agenda. I have a set plan to...